Start with the roll call unless there's something I forgot. Who's gonna, do I?
Yeah.
We just work our way around the table or?
Yeah, just work my.
Okay, so Chair, Vice Chair, Pidalos Terry. Commissioner Chris, present. Commissioner Marcia Martin.
Present.
Commissioner Sean McCoy, present.
Second this is a compliance.
Compliance Manager Tracy D. Francisco, present.
Lisa Downey, Regional Manager. County Supervisor Karen Daniels.
And I'm going to jump in. I'm going to introduce Lauren Sealy, who is the new Assistant Director for all of our housing authority that we hired. So that was a position that you all approved of the budget. I'll let Lauren talk a little bit about herself, but quickly Lauren worked through the county, worked through the Longmont County Housing Authority. Lauren actually uniquely enough was appointed by the council to be.
Forward view.
Forward view on the Housing Authority Board. What she's doing is she's now resigned from that. Lauren?
We can go after we finish the roll call.
Or we can do it during the workshop.
Yeah, so Lauren Sealy, Assistant Director, present.
Carol DeMinger, Executive Director.
Martha Donald, Housing Director.
Tim Hall, Assistant City Director.
Um, we, yeah. Um, so any agenda revisions or submission of documents? And then we'll move on to the review and approval of the February twentieth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I move the twenty, February twenty twenty-four minutes, Ms. President.
Second.
So the Commissioner McCoy approved or made a motion to approve the minutes and seconded by Commissioner Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Public invited to be heard. Do we have any members of the public? Nobody's lined up?
No speakers?
Does anyone from the public want to speak?
Three minutes? So now we're on to item five, older fee business organizational chart.
Alright, so we have a nice big version, either buckets. Um, so we just wanted to bring this to you today because primarily from a couple of staff changes that we had Lauren included. And also on the city side of the housing division, Christie Wiseman took the Housing Investment Manager position. And so we ended up doing, you know, looking at everyone's, the needs of the organization and the skillsets and just what makes sense for the future. Now that we've had about two years under this kind of new setup, at least since I came into this position and what we've done since. So really we're talking now for the housing, city and LHA housing group overall, there's three main arms. The city's Housing and Community Investment Division that really does the funding and policy and all of that city work. And then we've got the LHA operations side, which is what Lauren is heading up. That would be includes property management, our voucher programs and maintenance. And then in the middle, we kind of carved off housing development from HCI and put it in the middle because it really does cross cut across both so often. And then that also leaves room for future growth in that development arm as well. As we keep going, they get so many opportunities that keep coming at us. So what you'll see here, the big change with Lauren's position, you'll see the Lisa and a maintenance supervisor. This says vacant, but we've actually made an internal offer here in the last couple of days for that maintenance supervisor position. And then Tracy's work on the compliance and housing choice voucher side, all under this operations arm that Lauren is heading up. Um, so I really see the three pieces all coming together and crisscrossing in certain areas and also dividing and conquering in others. So we can really get a lot done. The other change you'll see on here is you'll see clinicians down at the bottom. Those are, one of them, they're all city physicians in the mental health center of excellence model. One is going to be funded by LHA and dedicated to the suites. The other two are funded by the city, housed at the suites, co-located, but then really serving citywide efforts. But just having more presence there will be really, really beneficial. So those are just about to be posted at job openings, so that's coming up. So those are the major changes we just wanted to report to you, plus all of any, if there's any staff changes, those are also referenced here.
So quickly, when you, when you look at this and you see positions that kind of go through the color coding, city positions, city positions that both have city Longmont and LHA funding. Probably more so for Councilmember Chris in this situation and then a little bit for Councilmember McCoy because he weren't here when all of this really started unfolding. Is when the then Housing Authority Board approached the city council regarding the situation. But what was really happening is financially, the housing authority was really in five straights. And, you know, when we talk about the structure and why we did it, you know, around, let's say around four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and fifty thousand. And it was a little bit different because it depended on the year was actually going into two positions. And why I say it depended on the year, because there were some years that they gave bonuses to the executive director. That combined with the Chief Financial Officer was somewhere in that four hundred, four fifty thousand range. And when you then looked at what was happening on the operational side in terms of compensation for property managers, maintenance, they were really struggling to fill positions. So what we did as part of the arrangement, and this is why you've built on the IGA between the Housing Authority and the city, is that the city then assumed various components of that process for an economy of scale. So today, the city, the LHA is paying the city, how much, in agreement?
For accounting and all of that?
The, the blue and yellow.
Um, it could end up being probably about a hundred thousand dollars between all of the accounting staff and all of.
Well, but not the direct staff, just like Molly, myself and PM and.
Um, it's a, it's a little over a hundred thousand, so it's about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So what we were able to do is then take the executive expenses that was really in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand and pare that down to a hundred thousand, which then allowed for three hundred thousand to then be used operationally, which then directly pays for, on the financial side. When we took over, they basically only had a chief financial officer and really didn't have separation of duties on the accounting side, which is why they were failing many of the audits. So now what we're able to do is hire three accounting positions that deal directly with just the LHA component. We were then able to incrementally fund an IT position that was, that assists with, overall we get, the entire city IT department can help, but they fund some of that. And then we also get all of the services in the dark, orange, which is human resources, IT versus management, purchasing, which they've helped us through a lot of issues. So the economy scale is significant because we actually have more robust services that we're able to apply from the administrative services side. In exchange with that, then what I'd like to do is take the funding from the housing authority to really adjust compensation for our property managers and our maintenance staff, which has actually helped with the applicant pool that we're bringing in. And then as we've engaged in other projects, council, the city council gave me the goal of hiring an assistant director to kind of help manage some of this. We needed it because we weren't able to spend all of our time associated with what we need to effectively manage. Looking at the big picture, which is where we hired Lauren. And then what we didn't talk about is we were able to repurpose the resource specialist position in all of this change. Because originally the resource specialist could only work at the suites and lodge and park stuff. And the moves that we made, the resource specialist actually can now work across the portfolio of all the properties. So what you're seeing is significantly more resources being brought to bear in terms of the operations of the housing authority. This gives you a sense of where we offset and how we work together. You can see a lot of dotted lines and, so really, but for a connection with the city, these resources aren't required for the housing authority.
This is really what it takes to give it what it needs and we even need more to grow.
So should I stop to let the record show that Commissioner Yarmarow is here? Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay.
So as we see it here, we don't have any city consulting as of yet.
No, the consulting services is human resources, information technology.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't see the color right on.
Yeah, facilities, maintenance.
All right.
It does not stand out very much, so it might change that color going forward, does it make it more?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's the same color.
Yeah. And then, then when you have the, the two, the two sheet, COL is, help me with that.
City of Longmont.
Oh, city of Longmont, okay. Oh, ci, oh, yeah, okay, got you, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
It's a lot to take.
Think about the COL for a while.
I'm speaking like Colorado. Well, this is, I was saying to Erica, this, I, when I put things like this together, I'm like, and then this person's name is so huge. I mean, I'm just impressed, it's something else, it's really, it lays out well, I think it's clear for people to see. And, and it is, it shows how we use our resources from everything clear over here from Kristi Checo, you know, Jenny Marsh and how she's wrapped into it. And Sandy and Zach, it's just kind of impressive to see the different areas of Longmont's, you know, upper management and services. How they tie in the distances, interested in each good way.
Then if you really, I mean, if we built you the operational diagram, it would be somewhat chaotic. Because when you look at the center of excellence model that we use, everything's just crossing each other in the sense that this is more ministerial, operationally, how we work is, it's really a team dynamic. And so at any point, lines are crossing in terms of getting work done and what we try to do is stay out of the way. Because, you know, we're more bulldozers than we need to be, but really rely on the staff to work across and with each other. That improves the broader team dynamic. And when Molly talked about HCI, before I turned it over to Lauren to introduce herself, Christie Wiseman also came for over half. And so, you know, the cool thing about it is when we're hiring these positions and we're putting them open, we're actually, four, three years ago, we might have been able to probably pull anybody from existing housing groups to now. I think people are really interested in getting to work here. And so to me, that's again a testament to the broader team, I know what they've been able to do. But Lauren, why don't you tell a little bit about yourself?
Um, so I'm Lauren Sealy, I am a former board member. I was appointed to the, the board commissioners back in twenty twenty before the city sort of took over LHA's management. And then continued to serve on the advisory board. I initially joined because I lived in Longmont and wanted to get more involved in housing. I worked for the county attorney's office as a paralegal, supporting BCA on their financial closings and other housing related things. I'll tell you more about the cafe a little bit. And, uh, really wanted to get more involved in housing in the community. And that sort of was the gateway to me becoming a housing developer at the Older Family Housing Authority. So two years later, I got a job as a real estate developer with Longmont County Housing Authority and worked there for two and a half years. Built this boat, so I did the financial closing on it and then turned around and looked at the actual building, which was really cool. And this entire time, been serving very closely on the board, staff, and always really liked it. And as they, I watched LHA sort of dig itself out of an inferno and was really impressed. I was impressed from the day that Harold came into our first meeting and was like, here's what we're gonna do. Um, and I remember thinking, wow, I really like that, I wanna, I wanna be part of that. So, um, you know, it wasn't an easy decision to leave doing development, because that's a lot of fun. But I really enjoy working here and I really always enjoyed this team and all the work that we did. So I'm excited to be here and very passionate about housing. I myself am the recipient of a form of housing. My first home purchase was a city of longer permanently affordable condo. Um, and I really think that that's what allowed me to be able to step up and own a home here in Longmont and then now live in Louisville. But, um, you know, housing is, housing is probably the most important thing that a person can have in terms of health and stability. So, um, you know, the public served for life and I'm just really happy to be here. Do you guys have any questions for me?
To be with this, I don't know if you all have any more questions to drop.
And this is just for today.
Yeah, we're done.
Then we're gonna go ahead and move on to the, the resolution for LHA twenty twenty-four oh six approving the, um, the adoption and implementation of the housing choice voucher program administrative plan. Is anyone trying to?
So that's me, that's me. So we did this every year, we update our policies and procedures and we also update any federal guidelines that have changed. In this plan, it, there's a lot of changes and they're all federal changes. They came out with the housing opportunity through modernization path, which is HOTMA. And they implemented it this year, well, last year, and we have to implement it this year. So a lot of the changes in it is just federal. Some of the, the highlights of HOTMA is the way that we calculate rents is, is changing. The amount of medical deductions that we give to elderly and disabled. And, um, the annual adjusted gross income, how we, how we decide that. So it's, it's, it's not a whole lot of changes, but it's, it's gonna affect some of the tenants negatively. But we'll work through that. There is two, um, changes that, that we're suggesting that are not because of the, the federal changes. Um, one is we've got a minimum rent payment of fifty dollars. So if they have zero, zero rent or zero income, they still have to pay fifty dollars. And that has caused some issues. If somebody gets behind three months, we're evicting somebody for a hundred and fifty dollars. And so we'd like to, to change that from fifty dollars to zero. If they don't have any income, they can't, they can't pay. So we're suggesting that. The other suggestion is.
So let's clarify, when Tracy says we're a victim, not, not the housing authority, because when individuals have a voucher, they're with private, private placement landlords. And so we're paying the landlords our component of the rent, which may be everything but fifty dollars. And we have seen occasions where people have benefit of literally over a hundred and fifty dollars.
And our PDVs are the same, our project based vouchers that are at the suites or at Paul River, they also have the fifty dollar requirement. So that, that we're suggesting that that goes down to zero.
So, um, the same recovery for LHA would cover the fifty dollars?
Yeah. It'd be part of the half payment that we make.
And the part that gives us the ability to go to zero, we don't have to go to zero, right?
We would if their, if their income is zero.
If their income is zero, but.
A lot of times their income could be so low that, and that they have to pay utilities that it brings it down to zero.
Right.
So paying the fifty.
So it's the evaluation that lets us have that option. The other thing that we've seen in terms of working with individuals is, Tracy and I did a lot of this actually. As individuals' income changes, they need to report both increases in income and they absolutely should report decreases in income because it lets us reevaluate it. We've had situations where people have had significant life events, a car accident, where all of a sudden, because of that, they then get unemployment because their accident has not allowed them to work. And there's a period every year of unemployment where then there's a weird lapse. And so we routinely see issues where people can lose, go to zero midstream and it gives us the ability to work with them.
Yeah, and under the HOTMA, we, we now have a hardship. If they've, if they, if their rent is, let's say a hundred dollars and they've got medical problems or they've got, um, some life event that, that throws them, um, off kilter and they need to, they can fire, file a hardship request. And then we can look at each one individually and abate the, not abate the rent, but lower the rent for a couple of months. And look at it on an individual basis.
So you'd lower the, uh, lower the portion that they are required to pay, but that's, that landlord's so good, so it's, yes.
Yes, so then you can lower their, their rent during that period of time. The other, the other.
Excuse me, so what forms do they, I mean, do they, I know they can go into office and say, hey, I've had this tragic event and I'm not able to pay my rent this month or maybe for six months. Is there a form, what is the process?
We will, we will develop a form, we're not going to, we had to pick a date that we started implementing HOTMA, the housing. And we picked August first. So we will be prepared for these changes come August first.
And hopefully that would be like a part of this, would that be a part of the system we were talking about before? Where if they go into the system and say, you know, I'm requesting blah, blah, blah because of this event and then, um, give me six months or whatever, and then you all approve it throughout the system. Because I think that instead of them going back and filling out more paperwork and, you know, it can be, it can be a lot, you know?
Can I do that?
So.
We would have, it would be individ, every individual, it would be, you know, looking at each individual situation.
This is, hold on, this is different. So I think you're, what you're talking about is the CARES program and the grocery tax rebate and, and all of those issues. Under the definition of the CARES program, as long as an individual needs criteria and other programs, they, they are technically able to be in the CARES program. So that's more on the city side of the house where I'm working with Jim and Sandy that technically anybody that receives a voucher or lives in an affordable housing property qualifies for the CARES, our CARES program. Now, it's a little bit different in that, so take Village, um.
Just Village, the Village.
Village of Maine. In our properties, they don't pay utility bills.
Okay.
So as part of our CARES program, they won't get the utility reduction because there's no utility bill. They will get the rebate that we give on the grocery sales fax fees. And so by talking to, to Jim the other day, we just need to download all the participants and those that live in Longmont and convert that into the CARES system. And that's the first wave that we're gonna go through internally. Then, um, I've also started talking to Jana at the county because we do know that a lot of the county residents on HCI, the officers actually live here too. And starting a transition of getting people from these programs into the city side of the CARES program. So yes, the answer is yes, there will be a migration that once you go through their process, we're not gonna take.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the main thing, that's what I wanted to make sure. And I understand you still will be requiring some type of form if they need emergency assistance, right? Okay.
How, Tracy, how long do you think the process will take if there's an emergency?
Well, if it's an emergency, it will, it will be a high priority. I think I put in that we would make a decision within seven days. I don't have it in front of me, it could be ten days, but it's, it's, I think I put in we, seven days. But it will be quite, that we would make a decision. And they, they can also, we've built in that they can also, after the initial ninety days or whatever we approve, they can ask for additional time.
Any other questions?
There was one other thing that, besides the, the rent, or the rent being down to, the minimum rent being down to zero. We also asked for birth certificates at the time of, when they come in and apply. And we're, we want to eliminate that. HUD doesn't require that and it's a burden for a lot of people to get birth certificates. And it opens up national origin fair housing issues, so we, we've taken that out.
Well, we know they allow, so that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They were born.
They were born.
Sometimes we might need it for, you know, verification of a child, new child or age. But other than that, we're not gonna require that.
Was that reflected on here on this side?
No, that, that is not on here.
Okay.
So you need the action on this?
Yes.
So we have a motion to move.
I move, uh, LHA twenty twenty-four dash six.
Second, okay, um, it's the resolution that's moved by Commissioner McCoy and seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All go. Next, so the budget approval for the Briarwood Camp Reals.
Yeah, before Molly gets into this one, again, kind of to catch everyone up to speed as well. What some of you may not know is that prior to the city taking over operations of the housing authority, there were a, a number of complaints that were brought forward specifically related to reasonable combinations. And so HUD began a process of looking into the housing authority at the time. Happy Fetterler and myself were invited by the Housing Authority Board to come in and be part of the conversation with HUD. And what ended up happening was that the housing authority at that time was put under a voluntary compliance agreement. And, and so really that's, in layman's terms, the first step that they take before they take you to the next level of receivership and, and other issues, which we've said before, a year or two years later, when we're talking to HUD, they were about to call us to do this. So as part of the voluntary compliance agreement, they set out a number of things that we needed to do, of which we've done ninety-nine percent of them. And the last piece was really the accessibility issues associated with the property. You all in your capacity as the Housing Authority Board and also the capacity of the city council related to the, um, I'm writing all the, uh, funding sources in which.
We have a CPG fund.
CPG, so we also use.
ARPA.
ARPA funds to correct many of the accessibility issues that were listed on the voluntary compliance agreement. Molly will take this one, this is part of the correction.
Uh, so we completed the, the list, we've been working with HUD for a year and a half to do an extremely detailed list of every ADA correction. And it's actually UFAST correction, so it's a higher standard than ADA, especially for the units and the commonaries inside. We've been working with them for a year and a half with a third party consultant to verify everything, get it accurate, correct. And then we made corrections in that first year and then every year we showed them what we've done and photo verify it all of the things. It is so detailed that in the original twenty nineteen voluntary compliance agreement. It is so detailed that in the original 2019 voluntary compliance agreement, when HUD came out and did their initial one, which prompted them to require it to do it for all properties, it was things like the, the water fountain at the suites was a quarter inch too high. The dumpster at Briarwood is a half inch too high. It is so incredibly detailed. So, that's what we've been working on for a year and a half with HUD and our consultant. And as of next week, we will submit all of the final works to them following HUD's direction. And we expect them to sign off. And that would be the last thing, the last item in the voluntary compliance agreement when they can say it's complete. In the meantime, we're still actually making corrections too. So, now we're in year two of the corrections. So, with the CPG funds and the ARPA funds, in the last year, we completed, I think it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of capital improvements at the properties. It was primarily concrete work, which the biggest ticket items on the list, which is really helpful because a lot of the smaller stuff are, we can do in-house, but we really needed help to do those big ones. So, the biggest improvement made was almost twenty-six thousand dollar ramp at the Briarwood Apartments, which is up here behind the old LHA office at 1228 Main. And, or Kimmer, I think Briarwood's at Kimmer, anyway. Twenty-six thousand dollars to redo this ramp because it's a two-level building and the ramp goes down below grade and it was a big deal. Now that we have that in, we actually, the, we didn't do handrails at the time because we were doing, we've got concrete, like half, half walls. But coming in, now that we've done that work, now we need to put handrails on top. So, we have, the same contractor that did the concrete work, he's provided us a quote. He's got several quotes in accordance with policy, but he's ready to do the work. But we cannot give him the go-ahead on the contract because we need a budget approval from this board because it was not included in budget. And that really is a front funding through the LHA general fund because I've got some CD funds being released, we've got some swaps of funding happening. And I would come in and modify that CDG/CV award to accommodate this. So, it's more of an approval, have it be on the general fund for a temporary period of time while we can bring that funding in and reverse. So, the total for the handrails is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty. But at the same time, there was another newer issue identified with a landing on one of the end of the ramps and this concrete contractor could do that work for us at the same time. I have to still, I have to put this, this would be subject to an approval of ARPA funding to bring that one in. But what I would like to do for now, because it's something we have to do to get HUD to sign off on it, is we could wrap that in with the budget approval and then we'll come back with the plan for what the grant funding could be. So, that one may end up being a cost that we bear if I cannot get that funding. I'm quite sure I can, it's just not as solid as the handrails.
With the ARPA?
Yeah.
I've just got, on, on the city side, I just need to look at interest earnings to see where we are. And then you all have given me that correction that this seems like it is interest earnings for this inside. So, we've gotta go through the exercise financially.
Swaps.
This is under con, concrete?
More concrete work.
Do you know how much it's gonna be?
Seven thousand eight hundred dollars. It's a com, it's a complex area to work in.
So? The handrails are twenty-one seven forty.
And the handrails, I know I have the funding for. We just have to make moves and assuming this all assumes that council approves that in an action plan amendment, so there is some steps to be taken and assumptions that things would come forward. But even if those grant funds do not come forward, then we would have to take care of this somehow. And we would just work to find another grant source to repeat that if these ones don't work out.
And that would happen in a discreet way, correct? So, once this is approved, then how?
On the, on the, on the, on the, sorry.
Okay. For any changes to CPG, we have to send it through council for an action plan amendment.
Okay.
But that's, there's steps to be taken there. So, there are some assumptions here. Either way, LHA would have to figure out how to pay for this. I have a plan in place that is subject to future council approval. And if not, we would go to a Plan B and try and figure it out as well. So, the entire request at this time would be twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
I have a question. So, you mentioned the consultant, so what exactly is the consultant?
He's a civil engineer and he, he's a retired civil engineer, started a specific ADA consulting firm. So, all he does is go around and he works primarily with school districts, doing, they do all of the same work that we do, massive lists of corrections and monitoring that they've been completed to standard.
So, he was hired after we saw that we needed all of the reasonable accommodations and?
Well, not for reasonable accommodations, just physical alterations. But HUD required us to hire a third-party inspector as part of the CBA.
Yeah, I mean, when you see a half inch here and a half inch here, I mean, when you, when you get hit with reasonable accommodation issues and they come in on a voluntary compliance agreement, they get?
They were coming in hard.
They come in hard. And, and that's the piece, and to Molly's point, the UFAST standards are more significant than ADA. And then part of the UFASTs that I didn't touch any on actually came in as part of Fall River's project. Because, and again, this was before we stepped in, when they did Fall River, they needed?
They did six.
Six UFASTs. And they were wrong. And they weren't built correctly. So, as part of some of our other projects, and we look at Chris Mullen and some of the others, we also had to agree with HUD that we would add more UFAST units into those other developments to offset what was missed at Holder.
Aspen took care of.
Yeah.
So, we have corrected that. I will say, it is so clear that HUD was coming down with a heavy, heavy hammer in 2019. And we've been working on them since and showing progress and completing deliverables for them. And in our last conversation, when we were confirming exactly what it needed to go into this round of report, we said, we had a more open and frank conversation and they said, yes, there, we can allow construction allowance of a half an inch on certain things. So, they were starting to see us be responsive and take it seriously. And they are now being more flexible and realistic and, and just having more conversations about these items rather than they are.
And so, the consultant is looking at all the properties right now? Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure. Because I know how HUD is, so.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, the good news is, is we're now getting grades. And that was what, in four years?
It got signed in 2020.
So, it's, it was signed in 2020, we've been working on it for three years and it's just literally been four years. I mean, you all have been part of it. Just my numbing details that they had to work on. So, they've done a great job and they really were, were, were a hundred and eighty degrees from where we were, which is kind of a relief for all of us, I think. I think I know.
And so, we have a, a large list for this building, since it's built in 1990 and hasn't really had a major upgrade since. And we have, our consultant is coming in at every punch walk, which we're gonna give a tour. Some of the work that's been done after this, if anybody has time. We're bringing in that consultant to verify at punch. So, every phase of construction that we sign off on, he's saying that it's good. So, we'll have this entire property compliant and into construction.
Did it get rid of popcorn or something?
Popcorn is going. We can't see, we got some exploratory work going on.
Oh, it's not for us, eh? Okay, so you need us to approve, so do we have a motion to approve the budget for the Briarwood handrails?
I move to approve the budget for the Briarwood handrails.
Second. Okay, so Commissioner Martin had made a motion to approve the budget for Briarwood handrails cost. And Commissioner Garberos, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, opposed.
So, the motion passes your majesty. So, now on to the interim executive director report.
Yeah, one of the things on this that I really have to talk about, but we've also, what we're also able to do is actually to hold. So, we actually have. You know, for the first time in the city's history, we actually have a dedicated housing attorney who handles both the LHA legal work and handles the housing work on the city side. And when we really looked at how much we were spending with outside legal counsel, it was insane how much was running through. We still use some of that on certain evictions just because it's a true nuance. But that was a big win, I think, just for both organizations and being able to have a housing team. The second thing is, we have some items on this, but we also really appreciate your willingness to accommodate schedules based on what we thought may have happened Tuesday night in the meetings. So, we're not necessarily planning to go over this. And if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer those. But really allow you to have an opportunity to adjourn and then go through and get the tour of this facility. One of the things that we thought is, this was a really good, unless more, do you have anything you need to know? One of the things that we really thought about taking advantage of this opportunity in the move is really to give you a chance to see what recent vacation is all about and, and why we do it. So, as we talked about this building, it was built in 1990. When the housing authority purchased it from the private owner, it basically just financed the purchase amount, not a renovation amount. And so, obviously, when you walk through the building, you can definitely see the age of the building. And, you know, basic as popcorn ceiling to, you know, how they deal with the plants on the ground floor and the craters that come along with that and other things. And then so, this gives you a chance to kind of see condition of the building before it's completely renovated and then get a chance to see renovated units and construction and the process that we go through. And they can talk to you about the relocation process and how you're having to move folks to hotels and other locations. So, at this point, I don't have anything else I need to cover. Lauren, do you have anything? Molly? So, unless there's any questions on this, you all can adjourn and we can start the tour because we also appreciate.
Well, hold on, Commissioner comments? Do we have any commissioner comments before we move to adjourn?
Sorry.
Okay, so you're fine. Go ahead. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed.
So, out of kindness, where two people that weren't here should be contacted and let them know that we adjourned.
Yeah, well, Eric.
I just hate to have them get here and be like, what?
We could meet at an establishment afterwards.
Right across the street. Right across the street.
Well, I've got basketball here in Tornville, so.
Who are you watching?
Uh, Texas Tech.